Okay, thank you very much. Um, moving on, we're gonna go to uh business from the city council. Uh council member Buckland.
And I'm going to apologize to um members of the council and to the public. And for those that may watch us on television later, um my report's going to be somewhat lengthy uh tonight. Somewhat lengthy. Uh back a couple weeks ago, um Secog. I attended our government relations and public affairs committee where we uh looked and reviewed the overall work program for Secog. Um that was the the crux of the work uh that was done uh two weeks ago. And in yeah, in order of things to be done, uh we had to do that a couple of weeks ago to then look at our next meetings, which I'll go into here in just a little bit. Attended cap to cap uh through the Sacramento Metro Chamber. Um and went out as a requested member of Secog. Uh to look at transportation and housing and corridors in the Arlington Falls Church and Fairfax um areas. Brought back some ideas. Um this was a full day um out on a bus and walking tour. Um left Washington DC at about eight thirty in the morning. And I returned to Washington DC at about eight thirty at night. Um it was a full day in which we saw um uses of transportation uses some very um forward thinking, out of the box. Um housing components uh that were mixed use. Um other components, large shopping centers and and just the overall um method in which they're put together. And also uh formulated by the developers to integrate larger components of the of the population. Uh some people would probably refer this to this, some of it is stack and pack housing. Um but as we look at the future, the new generations, um most of the housing that we were looking at. Was um currently being lived in by the thirty-somethings or less. Their choice for living um is certainly going to be changing, and that's a topic um that I think has been out. And and certainly is being talked about even by the media on how things will will be kind of transformed even in the next five to ten years. So it was a uh some uh great opportunity to build a to go out with a contingent. I think we had about twenty uh folks on that on the uh. That tour and uh it seemed to be a uh a very worthwhile uh opportunity for all of us. Um at cap to cap, we had about three hundred and sixty uh attendees uh back there. And uh there were also members from this council back, but uh I had a number of meetings. I'm gonna go through them very, very quickly. Um but I had a meeting with the state finance committee. Um I mean the senate, I'm sorry, the senate finance committee. I have some, my pen was starting to wear out on me earlier today. Um but uh again, looking at a budget was passed. This was on Monday, Sunday night. The continuing resolution uh for budget was passed. Um and so we were looking at at what was known uh to be available in the next. Uh budget cycles and certainly through twenty seventeen. Uh right after that, I had a a subcut, a meeting with a subcommittee on homeland security. This is with the minority group over in the in the senate. And one of the asks that we have there uh is that they look at the global entry program for uh SEC uh international airport. Which would make the um obtaining global entry cards available applications right down here in uh Sacramento. There's one in San Francisco and I think four in Southern California, so we're looking for um that assistance. Also, the post nine eleven impact on disaster planning and um how information can be obtained. Uh for for disaster planning, uh being able to release that. From a less secure environment to those that need to be in uh knowledge of what uh they're facing. Specific to Oroville Dam. Also had a meeting with the senate subcommittee on homeland security. This is the majority. Again, um have some confirmation from them that they'll uh try to move forward this, the uh global entry program for SEC uh airport. Also uh looking at some FEMA funding opportunities for dynamic mapping related to disasters. Um so there there is a uh a great hope uh and certainly a desire by this subcommittee to build it, try to move that forward. Um and also then had a meeting with the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee. This is a minority meeting. Um and we spoke about the FEMA grant opportunities again for disaster response. Um and have, it appears, uh some bipartisan support uh to build it, try to move um uh some more grant funding forward. In the twenty eighteen funding. Tuesday morning, uh met with Transportation for America. Talked about some of the grant opportunities, some of the shovel-ready projects that we might build to engage in. Um had an update on the Office of um uh Management Budget from the White House. Looking at at what their administrative budget or the administration's buzz budget is looking like. But also the tiger grants and some of the funding under MAP twenty-one or a like component to MAP twenty-one. That may build it be funded in twenty eighteen. Um to piggyback on that, I met with Congressman uh Garamendi uh specific to transportation. And the needs for our area and some of that was related to uh ingress egress during emergency operations in our area. Lunchtime, we had an opportunity to uh hear from the Associate Justice Kennedy, uh which I will tell you was an absolute privilege. And uh worth every uh moment that that I stood there and listened to um him. And and how he makes decisions um on our court, on our largest and most um important court. Uh shortly after that, I was able to go back into a second meeting with Congressman uh Garamendi. This was a specific meeting. There were some members of this uh council there. And this is to the Fifth Street Bridge permitting process, being able to move um our permitting process uh forward more rapidly. Um Army Corps of Engineers was holding up signatures uh for a thirty-day period. Uh we didn't see why that couldn't be done in about a half hour and uh we asked for some help and and resolution on that. Uh and that has moved forward uh rather well with the help of uh Emily, uh one of his staff members uh back there. Also met with the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and this is the majority side. Again, asking for uh some of the of the needs that we have specific to our area. Uh federal funding uh to help uh our current local street conditions. Them understanding uh what percentage we're falling behind. Uh also looking for um some input and and where we can uh be more effective in the near future. Uh looking um at our infrastructure for bridges, rail, dams, old dams. And even those that are to be built, um and certainly um all of our federal uh highways. On Wednesday morning, uh before leaving Washington DC, uh was able to to attend a civic amenities survey result uh session. Uh this was a four-county area, uh Yuba and Sutter Counties were left out of the initial survey, will be included in future surveys. But certainly looking at what the public sees as valued amenities. And surprisingly, uh top on that list were outdoor activities uh to include walking trails and parks. Um it was no surprise, I I don't suppose, to to a lot of us. Um just here the other day, I attended Secog uh grappa meeting. Uh this was the second line so we could approve the um the budget for uh Secog. And the budget moves forward as a status quo essentially off of last year because the employees group groups uh at Secog. Move forward with some cost reductions related to their um retirement packages. Also attended the Subufka meeting, um led by our uh mayor here uh the other day. Looking at at a number of different things and I think I'm gonna defer just for time uh that meeting to, or the contents of that meeting to the mayor. Uh Saturday, uh I was able to attend the John Garamendi at an event down at his ranch down in Calabasas County. A number of area residents were also there. Um I will tell you that uh it was a a well-run event. And to build to hear um the congressman speak with um some of his supporters. Uh he is a man of quality and integrity and certainly cares uh deeply about our communities and moving them forward in the future. Yesterday, uh had a meeting with our city manager, uh with the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, uh Mr. Dan Lovett and Steve Cohn. Uh there is talk potentially of an Amtrak extension of service, um creating kind of a commuter line. That would come north uh up to our area. We don't have a lot of details on it yet. They're they're looking for uh public support. Uh behind behind this, uh but it would change uh hourly transportation out of the San Joaquin area up into Sacramento as a commuter line. Um but also, and the third, the third most populated line in the Amtrak uh line is the line between Sacramento and the Bay Area. The third uh most uh populated line in the United States for Amtrak. Uh so so they are looking to enhance um ridership through the through the valley with with uh rail service. Um also, the other day, we did a a river tour. This is only gonna take about three minutes. Um and I will try to talk through this, um so you better understand what is up on this video. Uh the river flow is at about twenty-two thousand cubic feet a second. First thing we looked at was illegal camping alongside the river. I don't have any pictures of actual camps for their security because they are committing crimes down there. To include uh uh illegal water diversion. Also, uh this pump is running over to a marijuana garden. Um the dumping, the trash that is left behind even after a high-water event, uh where fifty thousand uh CFS have come down through, there are more. This is a project um right between the Tenth, Fifth and Tenth Street Bridges. Uh this is the equipment here, the riprap uh into the toe of the levee and the riverbank. To support that, uh there was a section of a couple of feet that was absent any riprap. Where you see the equipment there that was existing, everything south has panned out. That's all the new riprap this week. That should help support the riverbank uh for the future. This is also a project that we think needs to move forward uh throughout the river corridor. We have heavy bank erosion north of Yuba City. Uh the banks, the water is up extremely high. The elevation of this water is very, very high right now. Um so you're not gonna see a tremendous amount of damage at all these banks. Those are trees that have fallen in the river. Many of those trees are a hundred years old. Some of them, the oaks, the big oaks are a hundred years old. There's a tremendous amount of farmland that's fallen in, um and all of this has been to the uh due to the rapid rise and uh lowering, the rapid lowering of the water. Uh we heard from Mr. Filter uh while we were out there, a three-generation farmer, um of what he has seen over his lifetime. This is the worst, folks. This is all up in the area of their farms. This is Yuba County, uh side of the river. Roads, trees, uh falling into the river. All of that silt, those trees and everything else are uh in that river. This is a large piece of body live, uh about two hundred feet of riverbank gone. Uh this is now whole underwater. You can see irrigation pipes, there's a trench here and ground, uh orchards that have been there in place. Uh on uh actually uh the road is gone. Again, uh riverbank miles and miles of riverbank. That mud, that dirt will affect uh fish grounds, chinook salmon, all of the species that live within the river. Um it's going to have an impact, it's going to have an impact potentially on our infrastructure in the city. With our water uh intake system and our uh expulsion of uh our wastewater back into the river. We have some action items that uh certainly need to be addressed. And one's the removal of trees, debris and and the setup, the trash and sediment from the river. We need to place some riprap on the heavy bank erosion areas and that's gonna be miles and miles of it. Replace the spawning gravel uh for the upper river. That's from Oroville down to Gridley. Silt management to get deeper channels for safe navigation, fish passage in other areas, uh removing all those deposits. And we need to work to fund the Lower Feather River Corridor Management Plan that our mayor helped um initiate that that management plan. I've been on this river for thirty-some years. Um I'm gonna tell you that I was shocked, even in the high water, to see the amount of damage uh that has happened. Let me explain how this happened and and how it was explained to me. The water comes up rapidly. It soaks into the into the soil. And when they lower the water in a rapid manner, all of that heavy soil that now is is fluid is pretty much sucked right back into the river. Um it's not from from the erosion as it was passing over that it would normally do. It's from being pulled back in and those riverbanks being released. To do that a number of times. Uh during the course of of what they've done with DWR and Oroville Dam has caused this continual recession of the of the riverbank. Uh so with that, and I think the recommendations that we would have for action moving forward, um you're going to see at least one council member. Um deeply engaged in this, in the process of trying to move forward the restoration of our greatest natural resource, and that's the Feather River. That's all I have.
I'll say my comments regarding that uh which you presented. Thank you very much until my time, but okay, council member Cardoza.
Okay, uh it's been a long month. Uh had a lot of goodies to do, a lot of fun stuff. I will start with meetings. I attended the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority Meeting, Gilcizer Drainage District, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. The Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, and then all council last week, we can uh attended the DWR Community Meeting at the Fairgrounds. Uh I was at the Economic Development Commission Yuba Sutter Business Consortium Business Walk. Uh we walked and uh checked, uh talked to, I had the honors of uh talking to uh nine businesses on Down Garden Highway between Winship and Epley Drive. And uh we asked them what we can do to make life better for them. Uh they all said that life's very good in Yuba City right now. It was due. The businesses were, fewer agriculture was just strictly due to weather, but everybody's happy with our community at this time and everything's doing well there. Uh I attended the promotion and swearing in of uh two two new sergeants and lieutenants. These were uh promotions within. Sean and I took a tour yesterday of our uh uh animal shelter. I'll let Sean elaborate on that. That we don't have to do it twice, but uh got to meet staff and uh it was a very good tour, learned a lot of stuff. I was out with the police department Friday night for a few hours uh with the sobriety and driver's license check. Uh we were there, I was there for about three hours. There was a little over six hundred cars that went through. After, but uh between the time I was there, uh there was no uh DUIs, but a lot of people driving on suspended license. So we had, the tow companies were very busy that evening. I had the honors of going over to River Valley High School and wish wishing Jasmine Dawson a happy eighteenth birthday. She had a pretty rough year, so we brightened up her day on her eighteenth birthday and we gave her a gift bag of city goodies. For community events, I attended the Hats and Horses Kentucky Derby after-party at the fairgrounds, and this was for the Yuba Sutter Fair Foundation. The United Way, the Elegant Soiree and Masquerade at the Calusa Casino. The thirtieth Annual Italian Night sponsored by the Kiwanis. The Blue Moms Military Veterans Appreciation Day. Um with that, with the help of the Early Risers Kiwanis, uh we helped serve. Uh when they did it this year, they started doing it the second day, they did it the first day, so we only served a hundred and fifty people for the Yuba City Relay for Life. So we did it on the first day and then also we uh served the Sutter County Employees Appreciation Day. We served uh six hundred Sutter County employees. Um I also helped the Yuba City Police Officer Association serve breakfast at the Girls on the Run 5K event this last Saturday. Uh I also was with, uh attended the uh Foster Youth Services mentoring and coaching paint night. Where, and this was uh courtesy of the Sutter County Superintendent of Schools. We uh have mentors teaching children, uh young children. Giving them wisdom and we had a paint night and we, great artists. You know, they were ages between, the youngest was nine up to uh fourteen, fifteen. And it was fun time, great. They taught them how to paint from a bare canvas and it was some great artists uh for. Chamber stuff. Uh attended ribbon cuttings, RE/MAX Gold, Golden Pacific Bank and Aegis Treatment Center. Uh attended the Business Connection Breakfast, Business After Hours at John L. Sullivan. Uh attended the Northern Central California Chamber Ambassadors Rally at Southridge Country Club. And then last but not least, I would like to wish all the mothers Happy Mother's Day, belated Mother's Day, and that's it for me. Thank you. Yeah.
Lot of stuff going on in the community.
It wasn't two weeks, it was for a month.
Yep, whole month. Okay, was that Councilman Harris?
Sure you're retired, huh?
That's what it is, he's retired. All of us are working.
I don't have a video. Don't have a long list as long, but I've been to a few functions, your video. Few things, I I got an invitation to the Republican Women Luncheon over there at um at uh Plaza Room. I attended that, which is good. Speaker by Nathan Black there from the county. I attended Yuba Sutter Transit Board Meeting. I also went to Italian night and I managed to avoid pasta somehow. I'm not sure, but it was, it looked pretty good.
Well, what's the point?
Well, if you saw my belly, you'd know. Um anyway, it was good to shake a few hands and meet a few people over there. Career Fair at River Valley High School, very good. We had a booth over there. Got a chance to talk to some of the kids. Um had some questions about city government and the semester at City Hall coming up. I had lunch with Senator Nielsen over here at uh Ting's Place um for about forty-five minutes. He was busy, I was busy. We managed to cross paths for a while. Had some good conversations about uh the city, the direction the city's going. Also a man of uh integrity, a very personal guy, does really, really cares about us. And um what we have going and what our issues are, specifically ask what he can do to help us. So we uh provided a little bit of insight there and uh got, one result was that day. Uh also attended the Elegant Soiree over at Calusa Casino, it was a good event. The DWR meeting at the fairgrounds. Uh very well attended, some good information and feedback from folks um there. Sat in on the Subufka meeting as an alternate. I also sit on the Gilcizer Board and attended that, which is quite well. I had the privilege also of seeing my friend of twenty-plus years, Dennis Huff, being sworn in as a sergeant uh for Yuba City PD. Along with uh another one of his counterparts and two others promoted to lieutenant. Very good. Uh it's always good to see the families and everyone here and taking pictures and and being a happy moment with the PD. So it's good to support them. Um spoke uh kind of an introductory, they said I talked too long. I tend to always do. But uh at every fifteen minutes program at River Valley High School, very good program. It's always emotional, always very effective and poignant for those students. And I think uh one of the things you're always scared of, they had uh their prom was gonna be that following weekend. And that's like, don't be stupid, and they weren't. They did, they did a good job. They had a good time. It was, it was a safe thing for them, so, full of good memories. And uh yes, I did go to the animal control facility. I don't know what you want me to elaborate on, but um.
Lot of animals.
Oh, I managed, I, there was about three that I could have walked away with and luckily I I restraint, refrained from doing that and. But uh one thing for sure, sir, you have a very good and professional staff and a beautiful facility if anybody ever has an opportunity to see what they do for us. I think it's state of the art. I don't, I'm not a professional on that, those types of places, but to look at it and how clean and well-maintained and the services they provide, I learned. I learned more than I didn't learn, you know, it was, it was very good. So thank you for that opportunity. And uh that's it. It was a month, busy month, and we're looking forward to many more, so.
Right, uh Vice Mayor Viddiball.
Awesome. I'll, I'll try to keep it short.
It's hard doing it the whole month. I'm gonna, I'm gonna abbreviate mine.
Councilmember Buckland shared a majority of the Washington trip, but I'll add a few things on that one. Um I also went to Washington DC with uh cap to cap and I was a part of the workforce and education committee. So along with uh Councilmember Buckland, some of the additional meetings that I attended were related to our workforce. And how to um get our our youth as well as um folks that are in college or trade schools and so forth, ready for the workforce. And what can we do to promote and make sure that they are career-ready when they come out to um actually uh get into interns or actual jobs. And one of the areas that I was really passionate about as uh Councilmember Harris just brought up is the Summer at City Hall program was actually brought up in Washington DC. So I was really proud that we were able to represent Yuba City with that program there as well. Um one of the things that we are looking to do with this program is make a regional effort with it and also to collaborate. Um as Brad and both Darren are are working with us together, um to make that a career readiness program as well. Um so we are very, very excited. We completed all the interviews for um the Summer at City Hall program. We have eighteen accepted students. Our first day here at City Hall will be June fifth. We have a mandatory orientation plan for the twenty-fifth, May the twenty-fifth. Um for parents and accepted students to make sure that we've signed all the waivers and so forth and got them all ready to uh participate on June fifth. So very exciting times for those um students and we got a great group of students. They're very, very excited to be a part of that program. Um along with that, did attend uh the meeting with Congress Garamendi regarding our Fifth Street Bridge. Um after that, I had a great privilege to stay with Congressman Garamendi. Um as he found out that this was my first trip to Washington DC, so he was kind of blown away by that. Um so he had me stay and I invited Darren since we were in the same building. Um we were able to go to the House floor while they were voting, so he took us when the bells were chiming and went down those hallways. And went into the members-only area to watch what they do. Um chaotic, to say the least. Um also, uh the luncheon with uh Justice Kennedy was phenomenal. That was an opportunity that I, I'm very honored that I was uh present at that time. Um also attended the swear-in ceremonies for um a couple of our sergeants, um as well as our lieutenants um a few days ago. Um let's see, what else was there? Um. I think that pretty much covers since we were um on this trip that took a a full week. Just wanna say with graduations coming up, um everybody please be safe. Lots of parties going on, scholarship nights. I do want to make a personal um. Proud mama here. Um my daughter has been accepted to university and has received an academic scholarship. She actually walked herself onto the university volleyball team. And so her signing and press release is scheduled for next Wednesday at the River Valley um High School Library at six o'clock. So those who are available, please come and join the, join the festivities. We'll have cake and refreshments afterwards. We're just really excited, so. It's a, it's a great time and I've seen several other kids who received the press release and and signings as well. So as we see Pat and Chuck there, um they're grander did as well, so just exciting times and just please be safe with all the parties and so forth that are going on right now. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. As you hear, um while we did not have uh the two meetings this year as far as regular, we did have lots of special meetings. Um not just with DWR, but our own on uh different issues. And then of course, we did tend, um I also went to uh cap to cap Washington DC. Uh I probably guess my specialties are uh water resources and flood protection since those have been, excuse me. Now about um ten years of uh those efforts already in different capacities. Each one of us has a specialty that we deal with and are passionate on. And so um uh we were actually utilized very strongly by the committees to be key uh components in in the efforts. Um but I was on waters, water resources, which has to do with water supply. Uh Oroville was definitely discussed. Um and perhaps uh some reforms to uh NEPA, which is the um National Environmental Protection Act, I think it is. Uh I always get those things all mixed up and some reforms dealing with different uh components, including the air quality districts. I I was asked to go.
I was asked to go attend an extra meeting, which I wasn't on a committee, because I do serve on Frac Mid, which is our local air quality committee. And we were supervisor, Matt Conet, went also, and we were able to contribute extra ideas and concepts and stuff with them, and real-life examples, and enlightened some of the electeds back there in Congress. But then I also, the West Feather River Levy Project was discussed for the funding for getting that improvement, because that is part of our benefit assessment passed for the region. And Corps of Engineers, I think, and this is also part of Subufka because it all kind of blended together, so to be Flood Control Agency. They moved a project that was not even on the list of hundreds of projects, to where we are in the top four list and perhaps even three. Because they are talking about only four are going to be funded, and they have certain categories. One in one category, I don't remember what they are at this moment, one in another and two in another category. We qualify to be in either the one or the two. So we have a high probability that our project will get funded. And if we had not been back there, I wouldn't even been, we wouldn't have been thought of. This was one to where it was very effective. So it's phenomenal. I mean, the fundings that are being cut back at the Capitol right now in Washington DC, the things that are being looked at changed. Luckily, we're going to be, looks like in the top running for the remaining funding. Let's see, of course, the Tenth Street and the Fifth Street Bridge water problem or the bank erosion that was there, of course, I don't know if anybody saw it, but they had the equipment out there shoring it up. Some of the funding needed to make sure that that gets financed and taken care of was also being discussed. Justice Kennedy, wow, what a brilliant man. A man of few words, but every word that he spoke was, it literally had volumes of meaning behind it. You really had to listen carefully and to follow him. Brilliant understanding of the judicial system, how to make it work, even with the diversity that they have, and understanding of the responsibility of that body to the citizens of the United States. Just a brilliant man. Let's see, Secog, you mentioned some of the items at Secog. Thank you for fighting so hard for us. I did have a question regarding that. Are we advanced in any of our projects on there, or is it just going to be, were you able to get some arm twisting? He doesn't want to say maybe.
Arm twisting is part of the process.
Yes, it is.
You know, as we try to move forward some of the, of our local projects, while, while we were in Washington itself, our Bridge Street project, that, that complete corridor was discussed. There is no, there's no grant money on that side. But yet, while I met with other members of Secog while we were back there, sometimes not having the opportunity to do otherwise, we talked about some of the measures to build and advance that project forward. So we look forward to what can be done, especially when it comes to ingress egress related to our emergency operations in the area.
And that was part of it, the emergency operation improvements for roads. So we have new opportunities for framing our argument for why we need our road improvements.
We even discussed the third bridge option, so.
Yep. Yeah, well, as a local item, and actually it's being discussed at a deeper level than we would have expected, so. Then I did actually have the opportunity to speak Sutter High School for the Junior Statesmen's Assembly. And their subject of the night was apathy toward local government or apathy dealing with public issues. And they wanted to know how I got into, into politics and how I even got thought about running. And so I just told them the truth, how it actually happened. Some of the ideas, I just wanted to be fly on the wall and watch what was going on at a central committee. And a year and a half later, I was running for office, and it was like, a little shock to me. But it did definitely open my eyes as to the need, and I thought maybe I could contribute. And hopefully I have been successful in that. I visited Airport Monthly Pilot's Meeting, where they talk about serving a hundred-dollar sandwich for five bucks. In other words, they talk about the fuel that they have to fly in to get the thing. I just get to drive over there. At this time, I have been doing a lot of contracts in our business, our sewing company. So some of these meetings that I've been wanting to get to, I've been unable to make it to, some of the more social ones. Since when you have a business, you have contracts, you get them done or you lose contracts. So I've been quite busy on some of that lately. And so I will definitely be able to get, get back out and a little bit more in the, in the social issues and committees and events. With that, I have nothing else. And is there any, we will be going into closed session. Should I name out the items that we're going to still be addressing?
You don't have to do that, Mayor, unless you want to. It's listed on the agenda.
Okay, but it's a continued closed session. So, thank you. Regular meetings, except for the closed session. Adjourned.